Good your life.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
We'll convene as the drainage trustees, we need approval of the tentative agenda.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you. A minute from the previous meeting, please.
Well, minutes of the last meeting on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, where it does the following, the Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session as trustees of the drainage districts with the following members present. Rick Rasmussen, Dean Cluse, Lynn Luke's, Abby Bosch, and Betty Ellis. Also present, Courtney Morris, Drainage Administrator, and Amanda Meyer Auditor. Other interested parties will the Wright County monitor via Zoom. Motion by Rasmussen and seconded by Cluse to call the meeting to order motion carried. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Ellis to approve the tentative agenda, removing item number seven, which was from the July twenty third, twenty twenty five. Motion carry. Minutes of the previous meeting on June twenty third, twenty twenty five were read and approved. Drainage claims for payment were approved. There was one work order that was reviewed and approved for sub drainage district one oh six and section thirty two of Bonnland Township. For a shallow concrete tile that was beginning to crumble. Morris presented the following eight drainage invoices, and those are listed there. One for Nine Master, which is our drainage attorney, and then the other seven are for Aaron's for drainage work orders. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Luke's to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
No additions or corrections, they stand approved as read. Claims.
There was eight claims today. They totaled four thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. And these were the seven for Aaron's Brothers tiling, the work orders, and then the one for Nine Master.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Open forum for public input regarding drainage districts. Review and act on drainage work orders.
We have two work orders for today. The first one is in Dean's area for drainage district one oh five, section thirty of Granite Township. This was reported as a blowout on a twenty-six inch tile. And the second one is for Rick's area, and this is for drainage district one twenty-one dash fifty-four. Section fifteen of Norway Township, and it was reported as ditch washout and empty spot.
Review and sign any open drainage invoices.
We had a few invoices. The first one we got from CGA, Cap Settle, Reverend Associates, for one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. This is for his time reviewing the drone footage of DD sixty-two, which we will have on the agenda for next week. The next one is for postage for Pitney Bowes for sending out the public hearing notices for joint drainage system forty-six dash ninety-two. This is for eleven dollars and seventy-three cents. And the last one we have is for Mozdam Construction for three hundred and twenty-one dollars for DD one forty-nine in section twenty-four of Goldstock Township. Which we are tabling this one due to a possible calculation error on Mozdam's part that I will check with them on and bring.
I would move for approval on those invoices with the exception of the last one, as mentioned.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. We will be in recess till nine fifteen. We have a conference call with Franklin County at nine fifteen. Hey, we're back in session. And this is to review and act on updated MOU with Franklin County.
While we're waiting on Franklin County to join us, I'll just let you guys know, kind of briefly, since we're on the meeting, the changes from the prior MOU that were signed to the one that is being presented today, that you guys have before you. There was a few additional changes, such as some formatting changes with some punctuation, numbering and lettering for the bullet points that were changed and some capitalizations. The abbreviation for the and sign was changed to have the word and spelled out. Where the drainage districts are listed, all of them but one previously stated DD, and then the drainage number, and that has been updated to say JDD. There was a couple of spelling corrections that were done for misspelled words. And then there's a few rewordings, as I noted on the document that was sent to you guys. Just a couple of them I wanted to point out. The first line under purpose, it had previously stated the purpose of this MOU is to establish procedures regarding, and they changed it to establish procedures in regards to. Under facts, number three.
It has been changed to in regards to?
Yes.
Cause that.
Well, it was previously in regards to, they changed it to regards.
Okay, thanks.
Under facts, number three. The second line. It stated, understand the importance of efficiently making repairs is what they have now, it was previously efficiently tending to repairs.
Good.
Number four is the, one of the new paragraphs that we're adding for the purpose of drainage assessments annually, so we don't meet as a joint. Each, each county can take action on their own, and then we will share minutes. There's Franklin County. First paragraph, under agreement, there was a couple of changes. And. Then the other highlighted, under agreement, and then the section under communication I talked about.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, like to call this meeting to order, it's nine fifteen, review and act on updated MOU with Franklin County.
Thank you. You're good.
Hey, can you hear us, Franklin County, can you hear us?
Yes, we can, Chris, we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, we've got Collette Bruins, our drainage clerk, auditor Flans, supervisors, Lukens, Meyer, McVicker, and myself. Are in attendance.
And we have Courtney, our drainage clerk, Dean Cluse, Rick Rasmussen. Lynn Luke's and Betty Ellis, and then we got a couple of people in here just from the courthouse.
Okay, well, go ahead and let us have it.
So, Collette, I'll kind of take over here real quick, if you're all right with that.
Yeah.
I ran through the agreement and just kind of gave my board here heads up of the changes that we have on the MOU, just some formatting changes with like the punctuation, numbering and lettering, and capitalization, abbreviations of like the and symbol was spelled out. The update of DD to JDD, some spelling corrections, and then a few rewordings. Kind of pointed out a few of the kind of more important ones that were reworded and changed. I think the only concern that we have that I also overmet or overlooked was our two paragraphs that were added for the purpose of drainage assessments. Number four, under facts, and then the last bullet point, under agreements. We're looking to add those two paragraphs for the purpose of drainage assessments that we do annually, so that the boards can meet separately and not have to get on a conference call to meet about the drainage assessments, and then we will still continue to share that information afterwards, ensure the spreadsheets that need to be signed. Collette, I did see that we had updated both of those paragraphs with changing it from percentage to say amounts. But the paragraph under communication, the very last sentence still says to also provide percentages for assessments to be relevied. And I'm thinking that we need to update that to say to also provide amounts for assessments to be relevied.
Under communication?
Communication, the last sentence, the last sentence. You want to repeat that, Courtney?
Yeah, so we had previously changed the wording from what we had originally prepared for this meeting for number four, under facts, and the last bullet point, under agreement.
Yeah, I mean, the communicate, the one you just went over, the communicates, we want to make sure that's the last sentence in the communication, repeat that again.
Yeah, so the last sentence still states to also provide percentages for assessments to be relevied. And I think that we should change that to match the two additional sections to say to also provide amounts for assessments to be relevied.
Changing the word percentages to amounts in that last sentence.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, any other comments or questions? No.
No.
Clues from Wright County would move for approval of the new memorandum of understanding with the amendment to the communications paragraph.
Vaness Franklin will second that.
Wright County, how do you vote?
Aye.
All ayes in Wright County.
Franklin County?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all ayes, Franklin County.
Okay, stands approved as read, and Courtney will make that change, and I'll re, we'll resign it once she gets that done.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, next on the item, receive and discuss petition to establish drainage district within JDD one one, one dash three, and take possible action to appoint an engineer.
Okay. So, this, we received a petition here in Wright County from the Latham Brothers, and they are asking to take tile that is currently installed on their property and is currently private tile and have it become a district asset. This tile is currently connected to the lateral five tile that is only about a hundred feet long. And I provided a map of what I got from the information that was presented to me from the Latham Brothers, I did have to reach out to them because they did provide a bunch of different information and a bunch of different maps with their petition. So it was a little unclear on what they were asking for, so that's why it's taken a little bit to present to you guys. I did get the confirmation from the Latham Brothers because I did send them the map as well, and they did confirm that that is the area that they are looking at. This area, like I said, is in within, is within joint drainage district one eleven dash three. It is unclear at this point if it would possibly be a reclassification and including these new petition lands with the current lateral five that is there and having a new classification done for all of it. Or if it would be classified on its own.
This amount?
No.
This, I think, is the.
No.
This is, this is the map included with the, right?
Yes.
The type doesn't show boundaries.
No, we don't have a boundary yet.
Right.
So the map that has all this little triangular stickies on it with the length and the tile size, that is the map that I drew up that Latham confirmed that is the tile line that they are looking at as their, part of their petition. The information that was also provided to you was the engineer's report that was done just over ten years ago. It was presented, the petition that was received about ten years ago was presented to both boards. And they were looking to lengthen and increase the tile size of this lateral five, an engineer was appointed. After that, there was, there's nothing on record, so it was never brought back to us. I reached out to McClure, they were the engineer at the time that did the report. That's how I was able to get a copy of that report that you are seeing in the packet of information. But like I said, that was never presented, it never came back to us, there's no further minutes. Though we can only assume that the landowners may have taken it upon themselves to do anything within that, and it was nothing that was in the drainage district. That being said, that report is now just over ten years old, so it is no longer able to be used. So we are looking at potentially needing to bring on an engineer to have them take a look at it, kind of give us their professional opinion on whether or not this should be either a brand-new drainage district, a agreement between the landowners that this tile will be absorbed into the drainage district and just added on. If it's going to be annexed in to the lateral five and part of that classification, or if it's just going to be annexed into the district and have it be its own new lateral as like a lateral five A, for example. If it was a lateral five A, then it would just be those landowners in this petitioned area that would be assessed for any of this work that's done, which is what it's looking like as of right now anyways. We did receive a check from two of the landowners, the two that had signed the petition, which were Donna Booze Man and Robert Latham. They were the two that signed the petition, and also each gave a ten thousand dollar check for the bond and securities for this. I will say that I have been working with our drainage attorney. He is not for sure which way we should lean, whether this is an annexation, if it should be an owner agreement. He would like to have an engineer appointed to work with him to kind of decide what is the best route to go with this. Back in twenty fifteen, when this was previously presented, these joint boards met, and because all the land for the project that was being affected is in Wright County, as it is now, no financial obligation was going to be on Franklin County, it was all going to be on Wright County's side, so these landowners within the petitioned area. At that time in two thousand and fifteen, Franklin County did make a motion to allow Wright County to take control of this project. And then no further joint meetings needed to be had on that. That is up to you guys' discretion at this time, if we want to do that again, or if we want to continue to have joint meetings going forward. I would still obviously share the information outside of the meetings with Franklin County as the project progresses in whichever direction. So, however, Franklin County would like to proceed if they would like to remain doing conference calls throughout this project, or if they would like to get control over to Wright County with the motion, that's their discretion.
Yeah, this is Vaness Franklin County, I mean, that's two miles into Wright County where that drainage is, I don't think it has any impact really on us why we would need to attend all meetings. So I'll make a motion that we give the control over to Wright County on this, just keep us informed as to what happens, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
McVicker. McVicker seconds. You in favor of that, Richard?
Question, that's far enough away that, that no impact on, on whatsoever.
It's in a broad, it's like a lateral, it's in a broad drainage district, so we're sharing in broad range, but this, this part of it, we're really.
I agree with that, man.
So, yeah, we're all ayes here to just let you guys bear of it, basically.
So I, I, the question I have is if, because none of these laterals have their own classification. It's all just one big drainage district. If we were to move forward with this, what are your thoughts, or maybe you'd be thinking about reclassifying the entire district so all the laterals have their own classification? Any thoughts on that?
We'll add, there is forty laterals on this district that do not have their own classifications. We have just the one classification for the whole district. And it was a recommendation from Wright County's drainage attorney that at some point we look at potentially reclassifying this district to have all those laterals broke out on their own with their own classifications.
I would think that's pretty expensive.
Yeah, I didn't realize there's forty.
Yeah.
It's a big district.
Are any of the laterals very long?
We, sorry to interrupt, but we have another appointment at nine thirty, is, do we need to, are you okay with?
No, we will, we will pursue through the drainage attorney further progress on this, developing this as a separate drainage district or a sub-district. Again, all of those lands are within Wright County, and so we will keep you guys informed of what the recommendation is and let you know how that would affect the classification because there would be lands that would be taken out of the current classification, and they would have the separate classification of their own, again, that would be only Wright County land, so.
Okay.
All right, thanks, y'all.
Yeah, have a good meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, she's getting us back.
So, Courtney, another question is, is, so in two thousand fifteen or sixteen, that was, the tile was already there, and they wanted at that time to make it? So how old is the existing tile, private tile that's there?
Looks like two thousand and six is when a lot of the new tile was put in from the documentation that was received, which was in that packet that I sent with some of the costs and things that the landowners had paid for. So it looks like about two thousand and six was when that tile was put in, and it was two thousand and fourteen when they put in their petition to have that tile lengthened, the lateral five tile lengthened and enlarged. And then two thousand fifteen is when the engineer's report was done, and nothing else.
They never proceeded with any?
Yeah, it was never actually presented to the board, the report wasn't, nothing.
And that's why, if you go to this document right here, which is the one that they submitted with their email, you'll see that it's, you know, I mean, it's a twenty-four inch outlet that has a fourteen inch dumping into it, that has an eighteen inch dumping into the fourteen inch with a fifteen dumping into the eighteen and a twelve dumping into, so it's not designed for proper flow, it's been something that's been piecemealed together. And if you turn to, I don't know what page it is, but in McClure's proposal or their engineering report that is over ten years old, so we can't utilize this. But there was a proposed drainage area there, that's the black dashed line here. Again, all of that encompasses Wright County lands. But, but you can tell that this was piecemealed together the way that the, you know, you don't normally dump an eighteen inch into a fourteen inch.
Correct. Is this on the bridge, that bridge that we?
Yes, sir, yeah, because, because that was in right-of-way, this tile was within the right-of-way, but when we
Vacated young blood.
Vacated the road, that land went back to the landowners, and now they're wanting to make this a district asset. Which, they're the ones who would pay for repairs or work done on it, so I guess I have no issues with that, but.
So if you guys choose to receive the petition, which we would need to have a motion on that to receive the petition. If you choose to appoint an engineer to work with our drainage attorney on this, the recommendation is to use McClure, since they were the one that did the report just over ten years ago. They have this information that they could potentially draw from as well. And with a lot of the information from their report already, and the information that was provided by the Latham Brothers, it should be fairly quick that we should be able to get a report back from them. I know Latham Brothers did mention Lee Gallantine as an engineer that they would recommend. But they also did state that they've been in communication with Gallantine, asking some questions and that, and that he is a good close friend. They don't believe that he would be a disinterested engineer to be appointed, so I think McClure would be probably the better route to go, mainly because of the fact that they did this report ten years ago.
I, I would agree a hundred percent with going with McClure. So, so you need a motion to accept the petition.
To receive it.
To receive the petition.
Yep.
And to appoint.
An engineer to work with our drainage attorney.
So when we do three, one eleven, are, are we, he wants to know, are we the three or are we the one eleven?
One eleven.
Yeah.
So. And then Franklin County calls it three, one eleven, we call it eleven, one eleven dash three, yeah. Just because we, that way our numbers, our district, district comes first when we're in Wright County.
Yeah, even though they are the controlling county.
Yeah, he was looking at this compared to the MOU, so.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming that they're the controlling county because they have the most lands that are drained into.
So I'll make a motion to receive the petition for establishing a drainage, new drainage district within one eleven dash three, and.
Concerning lateral five?
Concerning lateral five.
Good.
Extending lateral five, and appoint McClure Engineering as the engineer on this project.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Anything else for the trustees?
For this week. Maybe until next week, it's a busy one.
And you'll redo this and it's giving a holiday.
And then the Mozdam thing, you're going to check on, this one, I will go out and see if I can get some pictures of it, this is the ready one, and they do not want to do this until after August.
They already have Mozdam.
Correct. I would make a motion to adjourn as drainage trustees.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Okay, now convene as board of supervisors. I need approval of the tentative agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative agenda as presented.
Second that.
All in favor? Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes? Would you read the minutes of the last meeting, please?
June twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors has created its district trustees to view the minutes. From the meeting, see the drainage district minutes on the county website. Chairman Restonson called the regular meeting of the right front of Board of Supervisors to order at nine oh eight A M. Members present were Cluse, Bosch, Rassism and Lus and Ellis. Motion by Cluse, second by Ellis to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries minutes of the previous regular meeting of June twenty third, twenty twenty five are ready and approved with one correction. Approved, thanks for payment. Motion by Cluse, second by Luce to approve resolution. Twenty twenty five dash twenty six for interfund operating transfers from general basics to capital projects for buildings and grounds. By rokall vote, ayes, Cluse, Bosch, Restonson, Luce and Ellis, nays, none, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty six, twenty taxes and revenues as filed. There you can see the resolution for transfer of the funds. Motion by Cluse and second by Bosch to approve the Thanos participation form for national opioid litigation. And president Amanda Meyer, right, any auditor to find motion carries. Adam Clements, right, any engineer, give an update on the secondary roads department. Jerika Meager, right, any merchants and management was informed to the board of a local disaster declaration that was put into place. From the flash flood type of incident that occurred on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. It is a local disaster until other counties start to declare making it a statewide disaster. Supervisor Cluse received an email from Steve Kinkle, a past Shelby County supervisor that was hired as a representative. Concerning pipeline issues and ongoing litigation with Summit Carmen Solutions Pipeline. The board will need to decide if they still wanted to participate in the litigation. Currently, they do not have a price from Shelby County to continue the litigation. The board asked the auditor to look into how much there is left in the L A T C F dollars for this litigation. Rassism congratulated Darren Robinson for his fifteen years of service to Wright County. Motion by Cluse, second by Luce to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they send approved goes red. Plains have been around. Anyone from the public like to speak? Okay, review and take action on twenty eighty agreement with Hamilton County for sharing Veterans Affairs Administrator. Good morning.
Good morning. Pretty much this. Um they do not have an administrator or director as of last week. The office has been empty for two months. Um there's quite a lot to go through in this office. I don't want to really explain it in public, but um they're gonna shut the office down for three months. And so that we can get it back up and running in order. And so uh myself and Dan Green from Cassous County, who is my right-hand person in my district. Are um offering to go down one day a week approximately. Um for the next two to three months to help get her, help her get it straightened up, the gal that's currently there. Um she was twenty hours V A and twenty hours G A. Um they are looking at possibly flipping over her over to the forty. But then they still have to replace her on the other side, so there's gonna be a transition period here for her. But um with the office being closed, that'll make it a lot easier, but we don't know if it's gonna take two or three.
Right.
So any changes that you would wish to have on here? So first of all, um I told, talked to Chris a little bit last week. Came in and we had a nice long conversation and I really appreciate Chris. Um working on uh a twenty eighty agreement initially, you know, because it is gonna take some time. And um and to have the county uh reimburse Wright County and Cassous County on this. Um one of the things and reading through the agreement was that the uh. The salary, the reimbursement rate, I I believe should include. Um not only the salary but FICA, I PERS and health insurance, so all benefits added into there. And um because right now she just has just the salary. Um I'm I'm hoping that they will not take as much time as, you know, it. I know that you're very efficient and you can find things quickly, hope, and uh. And that it won't turn into a larger project than what she's planning on, but. I think it's a great idea to have a twenty eighty agreement with Hamilton County to to help. Organize this.
Mm-hmm.
Um do you know with the office being closed down, their veterans, how will they be served while the the office is closed down for two months? Well, it pretty. They'll still.
They'll be taking care of.
Yes. There we go. Okay, so um. So that would be my my only change is to on the on the wages, on the reimbursement rate. From Hamilton County to Wright County and Cassous County is to make sure that it's um salary and benefits.
Good.
That in the reimbursement rate.
So for concerning the change to the document, would you? Figure that up and make it a price in this document or would you only state it in the document that it includes?
Salary and benefits.
Salary and benefits.
That might be.
I'm as- I'm assuming that they're looking for a hard number.
I would, I would, I guess I would prefer a hard number, so I would have. Chris work with Deb on what FICA acres.
Good.
And benefits are free for her and then I assume Cassous County you've already contacted. Yeah, and like I said, they Hamilton and Cassous will meet tomorrow. Okay.
So that being said, if you can get this drawn up. Give me a holler and I'd come sign it wherever you're at.
And do you want this backdated because it says Hamilton, like starting July one? But you know, backdate to the beginning of the fiscal year or do you want it as a? I say we haven't done, I've done phone calls and stuff, um. I'm.
No ownership.
I haven't spent any hours down there.
Right.
I spent a lot of hours the last two months.
Right.
And you got, is your mileage in this too or not?
Yes, it is included in there. Seventy cents a month.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm actually looking at, there was another county over in eastern Iowa that had a similar issue. And they closed the office for three months and they have another V S O who works part-time coming in every Friday, every Friday. Um until until they're fixed and I'm like, I I didn't think about closing an office. I've never, but we've never had anything like this happen before, so. I think I think we need to do that in order for her. Um the the new employee to not lose her mind and to say, I'm not doing this because it's.
And the new employee is she V S O.
Yes.
Qualified.
She was hired, I believe, last October and passed all of her tests just like two months ago.
And has all her federal certifications.
Yep, she does.
Very good.
She is.
So I would make a motion to approve the amended agreement. Uh for Veterans Affairs Services between Hamilton, Wright and Cassous County with that amendment including. The amount per hour to include wages, FICA and I PERS. And benefits.
Yeah. I'm second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes? Just let me know.
Okay.
You got my cell phone.
Yep, I will probably, I I'm in Des Moines tomorrow and then I'll be back Wednesday. And I'm going next week to training, that's why I wanted this.
Yep.
Care before then.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
You're the right person to get a piece of care. You've done this before, right?
I don't know if you want to do it as a twenty eighty agreement. Oh, make it say twenty eighty agreement and then that way um. I don't know who you'll want to. And then um make sure that it gets filed, the twenty eighty agreement.
We can file with the sector.
Okay, so and Amanda, I think you can help with that, won't you?
Thank you. Okay, received a monthly revenue report from the Wright County Sheriff. County car service and fees mileage nineteen eighty-four and eleven cents. County new and renew weapons permit eighty dollars. Copy fees five dollars, a total of two thousand sixty-nine dollars and eleven cents.
Motion to receive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All eyes? Receive cash report. From uh fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
So last week Tuesday, Ashley Bosch and I went around and did cash count. Um I worked a little bit with some of the numbers because like the sheriff's office. Had an excess of what they they were adding some pot money and stuff to it. And that should be deposited, so uh this week or she was going to go ahead and deposit those money. Then Brenda was gonna deposit the excess money and get it back to. The two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Um and so we worked through that, but it was easy and looked, looks good.
Motion to receive the cash report from the end of fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes? Jeremy?
Oh, report for last week, um blades. They spent most of the week, they had eighty plus spots that we picked for water over the road, obviously from our our high water incident the week before. And then continued their routine blading, crushed old spots to the or a whole ton of those eighty plus spots. And then continued their year two rock hauling. Uh we did get art services mode before the holiday, zone one was a hundred percent, zone three was a hundred percent, zone two was seventy-five percent completed. Uh eleven work orders. Um and our hauling objective for the year twenty twenty five year two rock, we're at thirteen thousand tons, so seventy-five eighty-five or eighty-eight miles completed. Uh bridge updates, Taylor Avenue, you probably see this, we haven't been down there for for a while, so we. Uh we're in checking this morning, looks like we might be able to go. Um but we're able to keep working on Wolfstock Bridge, so or the Ori Bridge. So all the east side has got all the rock or dirtwork and repayment done.
Right.
Um. The approaches are ripped out, we're not gonna do them yet, that will guard rail and that'll be at the end, so. We're just waiting to get to the east side or west side because the high water's halfway up the bank, so our dirt work is mud work, so. Uh right now they just not getting charged working days for not being able to work, so. No, no movement on the Belmont Bridge at all.
Do you have um estimate of the Wolfstock Bridge of when it'll be open or when it needs to be completed?
I will hit put a guarantee on it, um because when you start switching from one. Mode to the other one to a subcontractor, that subcontractor can have his own timeframe, so I know we have a hundred working days available still.
Okay.
Um if if they come in and just do the work. Would be done uh within the month easily. But that all depends when they get due it in and weather, so that dirt work is very important to us on that west side, but. The river's to the point where it's ripped everything out of the river, it's our signs, everything, so. Um if a contractor wants to come in and try to reclaim some crane pads that you're sitting on the bank, I believe they're gone, so. Um yeah, I mean, if you basically have to pour the two approaches, they're a hundred and twenty feet long, both ends, concrete. Um and put in the guardrail, so.
After the dirt.
After the dirt work's done on the west side, east side is completed, so which was the hardest side. All depends, weather dependent, really, this one.
Is there already riprap and plates that on the?
Yeah, it's all shaped and yeah, it looks good.
And then and that Taylor Bridge, they they have it torn out, but they just haven't, then it then it went crazy.
The majority torn out, they have.
There's a lot of it laying on the.
Two pier filings left.
On the south side.
Yeah. But they.
Which was, I mean underwater.
The problem with that is that is the the woods surrounding it, that water will go down to those low spot and just seeps in, so. It all depends on how saturated the dirt work is because we have to keep some of that dirt. We're gonna use that dirt to build our blisters for our guardrails.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we lost some. So we'll just have to make it, it's just the heat time changed there, nobody be at least even be able to get in there and get the work out. It's very silty, sandy area right there, so it's. We'll get her in, it's just gonna, might take a little longer than expected, so. That's it.
Thank you. Any old business? Any new business? Update our meetings?
See, last week we did have a minus meeting, um we reviewed the uh. The audit, annual audit. Um there were a couple of minor, I guess. Um corrections that were being made. Um. So we expect to receive a, I forget what that's called, unconditioned, un.
Unqualified?
Unqualified uh. Um grade from them, uh and then. I think that was at three for me.
I had nothing. Anything else before the board?
How did the the weekend go out campsite?
Uh no problems in the campground, um. The lake was underwhelming.
Right.
The park usage was underwhelming. Um. There was probably fifteen boats out there all weekend. I I don't know where everybody's at, but it was underwhelming.
Good back to be good sometimes, I think.
Were they able to have the fireworks?
They did have the fireworks, um. Saturday night.
Evening, yeah.
Yeah, they took the barges out there like right after the last rainstorm. And that was even poorly attended in my opinion from previous years. So.
Oh, she's good, Jeremy.
Second thing. All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes?